Dear candidates, it's you Sandy Gamble. He's the incumbent principal board and Mike Arcino running for the same seat. So I think what we need to do is we all know you, but I still think you might want to just talk about yourself for a little bit. Maybe your background so we can hear it one more time and advance this taping. So he can share this on.
But I can't see it because Marie is drinking her coffee.
Oh, that's okay.
My head, you win.
But that way Vance is taping and that way he can share it on this page.
And if you make a real blooper, I will remove it. I'm being nice this season, you know?
So who wants to go first?
Well, I'll say I do. I'll go first, but and my name is Sandy Gamble and you do know me. But what brings my background, yes, that I worked for the school system for 22 years behind the scenes and the support staff. So I've seen the good and the bad. I have a good rapport with the teachers as well as administrators in the campuses. Now, I understand that one of my opponents being a teacher and one being a former administrator that they may gain some there. But a lot have already told me they support me because of what I stand for. I'm out to try to do anything and everything that I can to promote Lake County schools, to keep and retain our highly qualified teachers. Go out and recruit more highly qualified teachers to come in and teach our students in Lake County and progress further. Our, since we have hired the superintendent, our graduation rate is increasing. The amount of dropouts that we have is decreasing. As I said last night in the forum that we were in, it went from 6.1 to 4.8. That's 1.3, that's a lot. And we're 23 out of 67 counties. And we said last night we had 69, but we only have 67 counties in the board. So, but also I understand the budget. A lot of people think they have, they can, they say I can read the budget. It's one thing to read it, but it's understand how the budget is put together and how it is divided. And not all the money that is shown as being as a total amount of the budget is able to be used in a general fund as we would like to see it done. Monies are earmarked and that's where they have to be used and utilized in that form. Years ago, we had a cafeteria director or actually supervisor of food service that got released. And we sub-downed that next year to an outside source for our food service to be run by. The reason, because she would not relinquish $2 million in her fund to repair roofs. You can't do that at a food service. Can't do repair work on the roof of a building that should be maintained by us. So the USDA won't allow that. But she was released and then the second year we brought back the food service supervisor and went forward to where we are today. My, my thing is I want to continue what the superintendent has started. I don't want to put a wrinkle in it. I want to continue going forward. We had debate about, at one time about do we arm teachers? I did not want to see that we armed teachers. I talked with the sheriff at that time. He said that is not a good idea, that we just need to look at it another way. So what we as a board came up with, all administrators that would like to go through the guardian program, they can go through it. And then they are issued a revolver from Lake County schools to help protect the students there on their campus. If they graduate from that and the sheriff then deputizes them. So we as the Lake County School Board are doing everything we can possible to promote the students of Lake County. I will tell you this, we have a well-refined board and we work together. There's no ill feelings amongst us. We don't, if you watch any board meetings, you don't see us fighting or can be in contentious against each other. But we have a love to make sure that everything that we do is for the purpose of the students of Lake County. And it's not a personal agenda, it's an agenda that is best suited for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, Sandy. Okay, this is my turn, right? Well, so I, I know that I'm new in the block and not a lot of people know you, know me from here. And I know you guys now after being around you for a couple of weeks and I'm really happy to be around you guys during this time. Just to give you a little background on me, I am a New York City kid or we call the New Yerican. I grew up in South Bronx. I just want you to know, grew up in the South Bronx and we grew up pretty poor and I'm sure that everyone has their little store like that. One of the things I've learned though from that was value work and good ethics. And that was something I learned early on because that was the way we were able to survive as a family, not just me, but as a family. And my mom was a single mom for a long time because my dad spent a lot of time in prison. So one of the things that I try to tell people and I'm not preaching right now, but I'm trying to say is some things like prison ministry and God really does help our country and help our families. I believe strongly that's the reason why I'm here before you. Because if someone had talked to my father in prison and reformed him, he would have never sent him to the house to reform us. And then because of that, we came in. I graduated high school and from there I went to theology school. I actually studied theology for two years. I think I told you that before, Sandy. And it was a great experience. I had to leave early. My mom died of cancer and I had to take care of my family as a little 20-year-old kid. And I struggled to pay the rent and stuff. What really did for me was it built building blocks for me, building blocks to a firm foundation of where I believe my core beliefs started. And when I got to college, I did something terrible. I got disowned and became a Republican. My family was a long line of Democrats, they still are, constantly getting berated, but it's okay. I still believe in those strong beliefs that I have. I raised my family that way and I give them the freedom to do what they like to do. I have a 24-year-old, 21-year-old and a 16-year-old. And a 16-year-old girl, she's a handful, but I love her to death. And she's one of those that are probably going to be the next Supreme Court justice, I hope, if she keeps going the way she's going. I tell you all this to give you a little background on myself so you know that I'm like coming before you guys. I'm not some little kid, you know, just coming around the block. I'm 54 years old. I've been in law enforcement.
You're a kid.
You know, I feel like 54, but I feel like a lot older because of all the mileage I got on me from all the things I've been through in my life. The diversity I faced all those years helped me grow to where I am right now. So in the 27 years of law enforcement that I have with me right now, I spent 21 of those years in Orlando. During that time period, what it taught me was a bunch of things. It taught me that I never want to be a cop again, no. What it really did show me though was that I got to go and be diverse in our department. I got to work from riding horses and being on the mountain patrol to making kids' lives happy, to working in the school districts over there. I mean, there were days when we would have to pack trucks up and we all know this, right? I need, I need schools to start right now. And the reason why I need schools to start right now is I have a lot of kids that rely on breakfast and lunch in our schools. I'm so happy that school free, lunch is free and you guys did that for us, okay? Because I want that program to keep going. There are kids that don't have any other meal. There are times when we were in Orlando, we would have to pack our mountain trucks up at three delay because we get connections. We meet people in the business of law enforcement and they would just pack our trucks up with snacks and we would ship them. We'd spend a whole 12-hour shift just shipping goods to all parts of the districts that needed it. Because we knew kids would go home on the weekends and not have it. We started finding that out early. I know that today in our schools right now in Lake County, we have kids that are starving right now. Kids that will take stuff home and don't have nothing to eat. This is their only source of food for the weekends. So I really need schools to start quick. And then during that time period, I got to spend time on chief staff and that was an awesome experience. We learned how to work budgets. We worked with a $120 million budget in the police department every year, trying to cut corners, trying to make things squeeze a little bit longer here. Make a police car last a little bit longer. Use our tires just a little bit longer, okay? And we do that because we all know the benefit of keeping that money inside the budget and maybe they'll use it to help ourselves later. And so when I'm looking around at these large budgets that we're dealing with in the schools, we're going to be probably doing the same thing. I'm probably going to be a little conservative more than some people think. I do feel that people should be paid fair wages when they're in there and they're really working on the front lines. Those are teachers that are out there and are even down to our bus driver. If you've even had to drive a bus for four hours with 100 kids every day, I'm telling you right now, I don't know if you could pay me enough to do that for a whole school year.
Me neither.
So going from that guy all the way up to our principals, that I've seen principals out there 60 hours plus a week, sometimes longer. Bringing home their work and then coming back in to do their work.
How are you?
I gave a lot more stuff.
So I do feel and I understand the plight of what we're going through in our schools when we're looking at that. I was on the front line and I do feel like at this point in time, we do need more help when it comes to the psychological being of our kids. We've been trapped for a while. They're going to need help coming back out of it. Counselors are inundating with students that have many problems. There were days when I would spend hours and hours with kids trying to commit suicide. I'm crying in my office about the pictures that some kid took of them and it's putting them out there on the internet right now. And little girls just destroyed because of this. I know the plight and I know what they face in schools. I also know the business side of things. I've sat on the school board, I'm sorry, I sat on the board for the YCA team achievers program. We help kids to get set up and ready for college right from high school. Currently, I'm sitting on the board for the Lambda Omega Club, which is a club that we started in the Mount Arapuca Department to help athletic students and to help students with 3.5 DKs or better go to straight into college. And we help them get scholarship programs. And those are the kind of programs I want to expand throughout the county if I come out here, just to help the principals do that. And we'll find funding for that from a private source so that we're not just tapping into what we do in schools. I believe there's a combination of both. We can get some of the private sector to come in and help us. And I think sometimes with your connections especially, knowing and we can network, I think we'll be able to do that. So give you a little insight of what I'm about and where I'm coming from and what I want to see this happen in this school year. I will have better numbers for you and better ideas once I'm on board. And I'm going to be a hands-on person because I fully retire in August and I won't have anything else to do. So be a school board member. It'll be a fishing rod in the back of the truck and a school board member. And that's it for the rest of my life. I appreciate you guys, thanks.
Thank you, Mike.
I have a question. And I'm not sure how to word it about kids going back to school in August. There's three options at this point, I believe. I think a school board member, Bill Mifai, has told me that three options are still on the table. How, how do you feel about those options? And what do you feel is the best option at this point? Who wants to go first? Do you want to go first, Frank?
The state doesn't give them an option anymore.
As a parent, because I'm going to speak as a parent, I still have some apprehensions about my 16-year-old going to school. But she's 16, so she knows how to social distance. She knows how to keep her hands clean and washed and she's more aware. Where I have an issue is not the high schools so much, is my elementary schools. Where that little guy, like we were talking about before, he's going to be swinging around his mask. He's going to be digging with his nose and he's going to do a pitch too, okay? We see it every day. And that's where I'm having a little issue about them coming back to school a little early sometimes. Because how do we teach them to social distance? How do we keep that going? So it's going to be really stringent. And make sure all these kids are sanitized on a daily basis, keep the classrooms going zero in. No, we thought about big hoses, that's childish, we can't do that, okay? But one of the things that we look at is trying to help them learn. Because we can do that. We taught them how to do active drill, active shooter drills, right? They all know when they hear the bell, they do a certain thing. They all know when the fire alarm goes off, what to do, right? If a hurricane or tornado comes in our town, they know what to do. Well, let's teach them about how to what, sanitize, how to keep themselves clean, how to protect themselves. And I think that with a lot of training, a lot of proper, we're going to do that. And our school teachers, they're going to have to go ahead and make a step up. Elementary, middle school is really going to have to step up, go ahead and protect themselves in the classrooms. And making sure their, their individual classrooms and hallways are protected.
Well, in the three options that are there, speaking with a parent last night about that very thing. The, the school board is doing everything possible that we can do to be prepared once school starts back to make sure we have all the cleaning supplies and the safety materials needed to protect our teachers and our staff at school. Students, if they want to do something, it would be up to them. Because I listened to a telecast that was put on by our lobbyist at Claremont and everything. That they had a superintendent of the fifth largest district and he's out of Florida. But the fifth largest district in the United States for a school district, had him speaking and part of it. And he said, if they were to try to provide masks for every student in two weeks, it would cost them $2 million. They could not afford to do something like that. So there's other options out there that can be made. But the other thing is the different varieties that are out there. People even still continue to send emails to us as board members, we want you to wait till after Labor Day. Unfortunately, they have not seen the news of late, undoubtedly, where we were told by President Trump. We were told by the governor, we were told by the Department of Education Director in Florida. If we do not start schools in August, school board members will be removed. The superintendent will take a cut in pay and it would just go on and on and on escalate. So we're going to open up in August. As of yesterday, out of a little bit less than 14,000 students or 14,000 parents that have went on and did a survey. Which in that 14,000 is kind of skewed because do they have just one child, two children or three? So that could be more than 14,000 students. It could be up to even 16,000, 18,000 as a total. But with what was put across yesterday when I met with the superintendent in my meeting, there was 57% going back to brick and mortar. There was 27% that was going to do virtual and there was others that were undecided out of that group. Now, since that time, some of that 27% that were going to do virtual have changed their mind because they found out that they thought they would pick the teacher they want for virtual from the existing teachers at schools. That's not how it works. There's a virtual teacher and that's who your child would be assigned to. If you go to brick and mortar, then you have a little bit more levity about who you would like for your child to have as a teacher. So some of them are, are jumping ship and going back to brick and mortar. And we'll find out more because for us to make a, a quantified decision as far as what we're going to need staff-wise, we've got to know how many is actually going to show. So like I said, we as a board are working together and the superintendent is keeping us up to date. And then I also am the representative off the board for the FSBA, which is the Florida School Board Association. Because we took that money of the other four members that would normally be on there and we are utilizing that to pay for lobbyists to go and try to get us funding and change some of the laws in Tallahassee. So I get emails constantly. They're even doing a webinar right now and about the latest update with things and all. But the, the other thing is the school board has been taken out of the loop, you might say, as far as a designation as saying you will or will not wear masks. As far as the students and the staff, it is now solely up to the local health department. As far as the school boards, I've been taken out of the mix and I'm kind of glad that way it costs us less. We're going to get blamed anyway, but still it, it doesn't come back on us. So, and I think you might know who the health department head is or emergency operations centers is here in Lake County. And it would be their decision as far as whether we do or don't. And that's a big thing a lot of parents are concerned. If I send my child back, are the other students going to wear masks? When are they going to be checked for a temperature? We've made arrangements at the schools that there will be an isolation room. If someone comes in with symptoms showing that they have a fever with the symptoms of the COVID, they will be put in an isolation room. And the parents will be immediately called and asked to come and pick up their child. The problem is a lot of times when parents are called, they don't always come right away. So someone's got to stay there around that child or that student. Then, once that is done, now we have to vacate that room with the other students they came in contact with and go in and sanitize that room to make it safe for everyone else there. As I said, we have, we are providing different things for our staff. We will have masks for the summer to get started with the summer program. We have those teachers and all, if they would like a shield, would have a shield. And I tell you, if you haven't been to Taverius Elementary, they have some cute ones there. That their staff for next year, one of their employees there is a relative of someone up north in, in the medical field. And they send them masks. I mean, they've got ears on it, nose and stuff like that. It's pretty neat. But I mean, it's things like that and makes it where, as he talked about, and I went and read an article from the, it's, it's called the American Academy of Pediatrics, I believe, AP. And their suggestion, I even listened, listened to a broadcast here last week. Their suggestion is kids go back to brick and mortar, but they highly suggest that they wear masks. Now, the other thing is we're looking at how many students can we carry on a bus? Right now they're saying about 22. A bus that would normally hold 66, now we can only carry 22. And they have to all be facing the front. So, and after that bus does that run, then there's got to be some type of fumigation to make sure that the next run that you do, we're not carrying on from one to the other. So there's a lot involved. And then every day, there's got to be cleaning done, thorough cleaning in that classroom. So there's a lot of scare, but in reality, when we look back at it, this is things that we've been having for years. It's just, this is the highlight of everything right now. And unfortunately, as I think you were talking about it a little bit earlier, it started in 68 with different things. If you go back and you look up every major election year, something like this has come up.
Surprise.
November 4th.
Salt Volinsky crisis.
So, so as I said, I will tell you this, we as a board are very much on top of these things. And we have a, a person that is right there with us and that's Dr. Krista Burns. That's what her background is and believe me, she informs us at every meeting about what it's, what it's doing and what's available.
Too bad. I'm sorry, but.
Well, we know, and of course a lot of, and I understand parents that have younger children. But they are very unlikely to catch it or they have it and they don't know it because it doesn't do anything. Now, I know we have children of all ages through high school that have certain, maybe have.
Medical.
Medical problems. We have a couple that work in here that are in college and they both have medical problems. And so they wear masks and shields and stuff. And the older teachers are probably the ones that are the most vulnerable, really. Really good older teachers, I know they would want a shield and all that. But I just, I know you, the parents have to feel comfortable, but I feel that the younger kids, unless they have a underlying problem, they'd be fine.
Is that a question?
Well, no, I'm just, and I want them to jump in and say, no, we got to do this. Or no, that's not the way we're going to do it.
I've heard some teachers in the, in the field now start talking about this. And so what they were suggesting is some of the people that might have some medical conditions that might be affected by this really bad is to start hopping on the virtual school and start looking at giving them preference. And helping them get there so they can start teaching from afar right now and not be that close in that, in that classroom environment. I still, I still think that our high schools are not going to have that much of an issue with our students being so much more mature. I think what we need to see is our special needs classrooms too. We're going to have to figure out how we handle that because most kids in special needs classrooms, anytime I would go and get a read or play with the kids, they were all over me and they never stopped. They just liked being around, they love attention and they love that special hands-on. So I think that's where we're going to need those parents to jump in board and help us to make sure that the symptoms, they catch them early. And I think those teachers can do a little bit more personal attention to their students to make sure that they don't have it. There's no way we're going to be able to check the temperature of 800 students in a, in a room. Or Leesburg High School, right? 2,000 kids, what are we going to do? I mean, we're going to be putting, putting a temperature on everybody. There's no way to keep track of that. So we're going to have to hope that our parents get really educated on this and it's going to be hard, but we're going to have to count on them to help us too.
Well, actually, we are looking at doing temperature checks on every student that comes through our doors to make sure that when they enter, they're not sick. So that they don't pass it on. And that's been some of our discussion in our board meetings of how do we do this and how? And then it was also on this committee that have kind of putting themselves together. That's made up of teachers and some of our staff and the superintendent sits on it. And we as the board, we were allowed to be on there on the Zoom meeting, but we had to stay muted. We were not allowed to talk because of the sunshine law. But we were allowed to listen and listening to some of their concerns. John Carr, which is our assistant superintendent over support staff, he showed me some, it's like a clothing smock that they would wear over and it's very tight-knit here. And then they would have gloves that would be available. They can wear a shield or they can wear their mask and things of that nature there. The major's concern is like our Lake Hills situation there with those children. And we have some of those also at our elementary schools and even further up, not so much in our high schools because most of those kids that have a deficiency in their, in that kind of situation, they are at Lake Hills. So, but we are doing everything we can to ensure our staff that we're there to protect them as well. And the thing is the, the government is sending down so much money to do this with and to different programs that it's, it's not coming out of our general fund. And we're trying to be very cautious of how we spend that so that we are using it to get our best bang for the buck, you might say. And so that we're presenting a, an environment to parents and to the staff. We want to make sure we take care of everybody, you know? And like you were saying too earlier about the older generation. And like I said, that's where like this covering and the gloves and the mask or the facial, whatever it takes for us to do to ensure. There's even been talking about trying to do plexiglass panels and things of that nature there. I will tell you, in our offices in the front entries, there where our clerks is or maybe a secretary in some cases, there will be plexiglass shields put across there. My understanding, they'll be hanging down from the ceiling grids so that it won't be a permanent fixture. When this all goes away, we'll, we'll be able to take those back down or they may just leave them up as a just a precaution. But there's all kinds of things that we're doing to try to protect everybody. But the main thing is, and this was, he hit it about when can you do the, the temperature checks? And Julie Lou Allen, which is the principal at East Ridge High School, has the largest attendance in school for the county in a high school in any school really in Lake County. And she's like, I can't do this when they get off the bus. Will we be lined up till after lunch? So it will be set up in an organized way where the, each will have a time to. And the thing is, once they are acknowledged that they do have a fever, they'll be automatically isolated and sent to the office, to the nurse. And then everything will go from there. So we're doing everything we can financially and physically to ensure that this goes over. But the thing is, in anything and everything you plan, there's always somewhere that there's going to be a link that's not going to be caught.
I know one of the things that I was told also from one of the teachers that they would like to see is maybe due to temperatures for the bus riders on prior to getting on the bus. And that would help a little bit getting those. But I reminded her that we do have a lot of students get dropped off too. So that's where, you're right, there's going to be a big long haul right there, them coming through that door, trying to get them temperature also.
I want to go back to the bus situation for a moment. The question, when you said like 22 kids on a bus, won't the buses have to make multiple runs? And how is everyone going to get to school at the same time?
And see, and some of that was devised around where they were talking about split sessions. And which that is one of the options, I think it's option three, where they would go and they would take their mandatory classes and then the electives. They could, you know, if they were in band or chorus or something like that, then they could work that out. But the others have taken home online with virtual. Okay, well, in that case then, all those kids are coming to school, but they're going, but they will have to provide their own transportation in that case. They may get transportation to school, but to get home because they're leaving at midday or whatever, they would have to get their own transportation home. But as far as getting there and with multiple trips, we don't have enough bus drivers now to make one trip. So it's, that's where we're waiting on CDC with our health department and EOC to tell us what are we going to be allowed to do and what we're not going to be allowed to do to be able to make the trips necessary. Because as I said, we're short of bus drivers as it is.
Yeah, you couldn't pay me enough to be a bus driver.
Did you have, your workshop on Monday was about the three options, was it not? And it's online now?
It should be.
So we can go look at it.
One more question about that and then we need to switch to more questions. But you know, you're talking about the bus, having 22 students on it opposed to having 60. So in the.
So in the classroom with the social distancing, what's happening there? Are they having to hire more teachers to spread out the kids, make adjustments to classroom sizes?
You want him to answer that first?
Yeah, I'm going to let my kids answer it first.
Well, I've only talked to a few teachers on that, and they're starting to clear out the classrooms to give them more space in there. I know that's, that's something they've been told to do, and clear out the room, be able to spread out the chairs a little bit more, but I have not, and I have to be honest, I have not heard anything beyond that. And I'm sure Sandy has, in being in the workshop, but I haven't heard anything more about just being able to give themselves more space in the classroom and reduce the amount of, I have to say clutter, because I've been in some of these classrooms before, and there's a lot of clutter that could come out and make the kids a little bit more available to, and easier to clean is the big thing.
There's a possibility that the spacing could be reduced to a lesser distance between. There's also been talk, which was in our workshops, that there has also been talk there as far as, as long as, as a matter of fact, I take, let me edit that back, it was not in our workshop, it was on that Zoom meeting that we were not allowed to speak in, that it was brought out, that they are looking at being allowed to actually bring the students closer together, as long as they all face the same direction, they cannot interact with each other facing each other. So therefore, that would cause less concern as far as transmitting something there. So there's, there's a lot of things that are going on, but as far as hiring more teachers, where would we put them?
That's, yeah, that was the question.
And somebody said, well, you could go get portables. Well.
We still have the same problem with the teachers.
I, I have a problem, which we're fixing to, to, after we get through with the Four Corners School and the Lake Maniola High School addition, go to Claremont Middle School, tear that down, and build a new middle school. There was a lot of suggestion from staff there explicitly, that they would like for us to keep them on that campus while they, we do all that. To bring portables in and the infrastructure that it would cost, because you got to run the electric, you got to run the communications, you got to run this, that, and the other, plumbing, all these things, would be astronomical, rather than us just busing them to another site for that year to, year and a half, two years that would take to do all of the demolition and rebuild, and then bring them back together there, utilizing that money where it's best spent, is not doing it that way. So bringing in portables right now, there's not enough out there for everyone in the state of Florida to be able to do something like that, and be able to have the space, number one, to various elementary. I was the head custodian there whenever we went to Portable City, okay? Because we were tearing down the parts of the existing original building that was built in the seventies, when I was in high school, and building back to what you see now. We went to Portable City. Well, since we built that, and all, they still had to put portables back on site, I was told two years ago that they can't put but one more portable on that site, and I'm like, what? We had almost thirty portables here, and we don't have nowhere near that now, as a cause of fire restrictions. Fire codes and things of that nature there, you can't put them together. So what we are doing now is, we're going to be building out of prefab concrete, if it's approved Monday night, out of Leesburg, and we would be able to even make a multi-story, that they would be permanent structures, but out of concrete, and we'd be able to make a multi-story where they would be able to do things of that nature there, and not, and get out of the leasing business, because portables are terrible for energy efficiency. And, and I have a major problem with our present county office with all the portables there. We are wasting money as far as I'm concerned, but we, if we were to try to tear, I, I have a plan that I presented a couple of years ago, that we rebuild Taveras Elementary out of the property we have, and then we make Taveras Elementary our new county office. And then we sell that property over there. I was approached Monday about, would we be willing to sell that? And I said, but he wanted all of it. And I said, you can't take our practice bill. You're going to have the front part facing the highway, as far as I'm concerned. He goes, well, how much do you think it would take to build a school? I said, it takes about forty million dollars to build an elementary school. Oh, well, that probably is not worth that. I said, it is if you want it. So, but it, it's all that that comes into play, there's, there's not enough finances to hire the teachers that have been needed, there's not enough space on the, on the campuses to do it, and even if we were trying to put portables in. Does anybody know anything about Windy Hill? Do you know Windy Hill has a portable for every letter in the alphabet?
Oh, yeah, I know they're, they're hard to keep up and they're expensive to run.
They have twenty-six portables plus at Windy Hill, and that's all of their sixth grade class is in portables. Now, something that with, let's go into the concrete, we will be able to do, put sidewalks and overhead walkways, but with portables we lease, we're not given funding to put walkways on. We can put sidewalks, but we can't put covered walkways, because they're not permanent structures. So there's a lot that comes into play whenever you, people say, well, portables is the answer, it's not the answer.
Okay. Vance just submitted, I think it's two questions here, Vance, is that correct?
Well, follow on to the first one.
Discuss the pending budget shortfall, and how accurate are the forecasts, and where would you cut spending to match lower revenues?
I'm going to have to get with you on that one. Well, first of all, we actually don't know totally what our budget is until, I think Scott told me about, it's another two weeks before it will all come out and tell us what we are. The governor has signed and approved for teachers to be moved up in their pay. Unfortunately, a lot of teachers are still going to be upset, because what he's saying he wants to bring them to, they're not given enough money like always. So it is going to be a little disappointing to some, you might say. And there's a lot of strings attached with the money that is coming down to do that with.
So do you think that you'd have to raise taxes?
We're not looking at raising taxes. First of all, we can't raise taxes.
And sell bonds.
Well, and, and we're not into bonds, and as long as Bill Mathias is on there and I'm on there, we will not do bonds, because we are already over two hundred million dollars in debt from previous buildings that we built and schools that we rebuilt. And so we're not going to go further in debt, we're going to continue to pay as we go, so that we can get out of debt, and that debt won't be cleared until almost the end of two thousand thirty. I'm all about toward the two thousand forty years, that's when that debt will actually be cleared off the books, so we're not looking at doing that. But as far as what the budget forecast is for this next year, it's not fully known, but they have said that they will not shut, cut us short on the FTEs of what we got last year, they will not cut us short on that, and, and it just goes on down as far as what they say they won't do, but they haven't told us exactly what our budget is actually going to be that we have to work from. And what was the second part of that question?
It was, how accurate are the forecasts, and where would you cut spending to match lower revenues? Or do you plan to raise taxes, sell bonds, that shift the burden to taxpayers?
Well, I'm not into, well, we can't raise taxes, and I'm not into the bond issue.
Can I explain? The issue is that it seems like business will react quickly, and they reduce staffing, and they reduce costs, they turn off the lights and everything else, but my observation is during this pandemic, that I go to cities, and I went to Taveras and their city, their budget, and they're not recognizing any of these issues of the falling sales tax rates. They predict something, but they, they're either going to sneak through bonds. Taveras is still going ahead with a ten million dollar capital expenditure building, as opposed to saying, let's wait a year. And so the, anytime you don't immediately cut your costs to match your current and forecasted revenues, you're building up a liability, and you're like spending at a higher level, and I've been in companies where they've done that, and it cost them millions because somebody thought he knew better than, you know, what, how economics works. And, and so I get really sensitive about, here we have a situation where the economy is dropping, and revenue sources are all down, everybody's sitting there and hoping that the governor or the federal government will give them more money, but then that's coming out of taxpayers', you know, pockets anyway, through federal program or state. And I, I would like to see some responsible action by government agencies, rather than just listening to all the whining of employees, when everybody around them that isn't working for government, they've been affected, they've been laid off, they got cut, you know, except for maybe getting six hundred dollars extra for unemployment. Yeah, they cut their budgets.
We, we took, last year, in negotiations with the, the unions and everything, we did not give anyone a raise per se, which causes a lot of flack. And, and the thing was, the one group presented us with some things that they saw that we could make cuts in, the departments, and one of them was in transportation, let's cut their fuel. And my question is, so when we run out of fuel for the buses, who's going to pick up the kids? You know? So that, you know, the thing is, and then also some of the things that they brought to us as far as making cuts in the departments, some of the departments, that money can't be touched for that, because it can't be transferred into the general fund to give raises to, it can only be used for Title I or E S D or for the capital programs. We can't take impact money and give people raises, we can't take impact money and pay the insurance for the employees. That money can only be used for construction and repairs and renovations. So there's a lot of things that, that is in the budget that a lot of people say, well, why can't you do this? Well, because the government says, it's a little different than you handling your finances.
Oh, no, they got all the different pots in their command. It's called fun counting.
Also, what the superintendent did in planning the budget to go forward this year, she went to all the administration staff and told them, you need to give up, and, and they went and they surveyed the, the population at the schools for the grade levels, and having teachers and all that they had there, they found out that we actually, through the county, we had sixty teachers above what our population should be. So we, we had classrooms that may had fourteen or fifteen in it versus having eighteen in it, and so whenever you do that, you've got six or seven on that grade level, you put all that together, now you've, you've cut back, because you put them where they should be in a class. And so what was done, she did is she did the average that you can do. It's not saying that you can only have eighteen in this certain grade, you can only have eighteen in this class as max you could have, it's that you take that grade level, and you can only have an average of eighteen all the way across the board. So it works out that way. So cuts are being made in that department as far as teachers, and it went, you know, well, here you are, you're cutting teachers. Well, the thing is, if we're overpopulated in that situation, then we need to make adjustments. And so the superintendent and along with her staff are going through and seeing where else they can make adjustments, knowing that we could more than likely have a shortfall in finances, as Vance talked about, as far as the local tax revenue coming in. Now, as far as the other part of that is your property taxes, you know, everybody knows that went, as far as the revenue came up, you know, the property taxes didn't go up, but the revenue came up. So, but that's money we cannot use in the general fund, so.
Has anybody done any calculations on how much money has not been spent that usually would be spent like on electricity in these schools, water bills in these schools? The bus situation, certainly not any gas was used for months, and even if some was used, it was at a much lower rate?
In, in transportation, I asked about that situation there in their budget. I said, so with the fuel costs, we didn't have to expend in transportation, what I'm saying, you got to understand, fuel, fuel goes up, what we were spending for and paying to buy it last year, that's going to go up X amount per gallon when school starts back. We've got, we just can't go spend that money just because we didn't spend it last year. But there is savings there, and that money rolls over. Anything that is not used rolls over into the next budget. And what I presented last night when they asked about what the budget is, if you go back and you pull that final budget of two thousand nineteen that was presented, you would see that it says over here in this column, six hundred eighty-seven million, but up here, when it gives you the review, it tells you seven hundred and three. So I asked a question, where did that extra sixteen million come from? Well, it's where money rolled over into the new budget, and it was put into that. But the thing is, no one is actually going through and saying, this is how much we saved on this, we really don't know there, because we still had to keep the trailers going to make sure that the classrooms stayed mold-free, things of that nature there. The lights didn't have to go on, but we use a very high-energy, efficient lights in our school system as it is now. Some of the questions that I've had, and Vance brought a good thought up, is cutting lights on and off. Every time I drive by Taveras High School at night, I'm like, why are all these lights on?
Seriously.
Why, why are now these exterior sidewalks, why are these lights on? And our local law enforcement says they would rather there be no lights than lights. And we're like, why? You'd be able to see somebody on campus if there's lights. He goes, we can see people on campus if there's no lights, because they got to have a light to see where they're going. So it's more obvious of what's there, so, you know.
Do you have some improvement?
Just that, I think that you guys brought up some good points in the fact that we've saved some money over the past couple of months because of this, but, and we do have some funds set up for emergencies, and we do have some extra funds set up for catastrophes, and, and this may be one of those times when we have to tap into some of that. But one of the things that we have to do is really trim a lot on, as far as, even Sandy brought it up, we have to trim a little bit more on making sure that our staffing needs are there, but it's just not staffing, it's also what expenditures are happening at the schools. And everything, everybody asks the same question, because I was asked the same thing, well, are we going to give raises? Okay, we can, but that money has to be earmarked for that, and there's earmarked money for other parts of the, of our schools right now. We can't pull that funding, as he was bringing up. And I think that, I think our unions and our people that are asking for that know that, they're just trying to see what they can do from us. For me, right now, I feel like I would like a little bit more information before I make decisions on how we're going to be readjusting the budget for the following year coming up, especially after this big, big area of taxes that we're losing. I know my daughter in Taveras and Utes, we do count on some tourism tax, we do count on people coming and staying in our towns and visiting, and we've seen the reduction in that, so.
I have another question, and I don't know if I'm going to ask this right, you don't have to take this, Vance. You know, every year, these students start getting panic in, right before Christmas, because as soon as they come back, they're going to have to be focused on nothing but testing. And that didn't happen this year. And, you know, I have grandchildren, and they were so happy, I mean, they were just so happy they didn't have to spend the next half of the year preparing to take these tests. And they actually learned more at home doing virtual schooling because of the shutdown. So my question, I guess, would be, since you have not done the testing this year, how is that going to affect your placement in classrooms with the children? Are they at grade level, or do you start day one preparing them again to take these tests, that they just get very panic-stricken about and not actually learning the fundamentals of learning for their grades?
All I know is, at this point right now, our, our students and our kids in our schools right now are nine weeks behind, and they have to play catch-up. And I know that some of our kids are going to come back to school in panic, but we do have good teaching staff out there that know what we're going to be doing with them to help them get through the next nine weeks of school that they missed. They're going to have to make that up in the same semester that's coming up, and it's going to be hard on them because of this, what we did early on.
So we're starting behind already?
And, no, we're not going to start behind, we're just going to catch up, so that's going to be the difference.
Okay.
I don't want to discredit what he said, but I'll tell you, we're not behind. We've stayed, the teachers have stayed on top, the students are on top, and they are ready to move to the next level. As far as the testing, Calhasy has not decided yet what they're going to do this coming year for testing, but the thing is, they like to use that to grade our schools, whether we're A, B, C, D, or F.
I get that.
You know, so, and then that's how also funding comes down at times as well. But our, our kids are right on, where they're, they're, need to get back to breaking border though, because of where they can have that continuity of a teacher and things of that nature. Because sometimes kids need a little bit more attention, and they can't get it if it's online. So, but I will tell you, some teachers that know their students have made themselves available offline to allow personal intervention with their parents, knowing what's going on, not try to do it behind their back, trying to help these students. My daughter teaches, she's a virtual lab facilitator, even to the high school. What her responsibility is, the kids that are lacking the GPA to graduate, is to get them back on track so that they would be able to graduate their senior year. And when she first took over that, she had some situations there with this one student, said, I'm just, I don't, there's no reason for me to stay, I'm not ever going to get it. She asked him to give him. She asked him to give him her two weeks. In two weeks, she was able to start showing him a progress that he was making to go toward that path and he graduated. So the thing is, the kids are getting the, maybe not as much as some people think they should get, but the teachers are giving extra and extra. I will say this, the ones that are dedicated.
Oh, yeah. I mean, I, I know, um, our granddaughters, they, their teachers were readily available to them anytime. They would, you know, could pick, their mother could pick up the phone and talk. So I, I do agree with that.
And, and I just wanna say one real quick thing to that. Dwayne Weeks and Emily, Dr. Emily Weiskopf took their spring break.
Agreed.
To take and put the programs that we have together for our teachers when they came back from spring break, that they could hit the ground running. They gave up their spring break, were day and night trying to get all this compiled and making sure. Dwayne has worked, uh, head over heels, I guess you might say, trying to make sure that they have all the, the integrated software that they need and all the, the, uh, hotspots. We've, we bought hotspots, the educational foundation has donated money for the Chromebooks and the hotspots and things of that nature. So, uh, and I asked a question the other day, are we gonna be one to one when we start back? We're not gonna be very far away from being one to one. Every student will have a Chromebook availability. And those that will be doing virtual at home, I asked a question, what is there if they don't have internet? We are working on the hotspots to make sure that they would have what they need. So we, we're not losing ground. In other words, we're, we're just keep on gaining ground. When we first started, we did not have a hundred percent into the program. We only had about eighty to eighty-five percent into the program onto the extended learning. But once everybody caught on, boom, it's there. The one thing that happened, and I'll, I'll hush after this, one thing that happened is seniors thought that they would not have to continue. And then all of a sudden they found out, hey, uh, you didn't finish this, this and this, so you're not gonna walk. Why? So, I mean, they were, even some seniors were working the night before graduation and even right up to graduation to get their documents done so that they could walk, so.
I got a question for you guys. We're operating under our current budget, right? First question is, are we on plan with that? And the second question is, all of this mitigation expense for this?
Covid.
Covid, have the feds provided the funding also for the rest of the year?
They are providing. Okay, we are on task with our budget that we have now that we're not overdrawn anywhere.
Okay.
Okay, uh, because as Vance brought out about some savings and things of that nature, because we're not having to use money here and there. So we're, we're looking good on that. Uh, we are being given money. Also, there's called a CARES Act, so like that, that covers.
That was the first one? That was the first one that came out with?
Right, and then there's another one since that. But the CARES Act is for like employees, if something happens while they're on the job, that they would be covered. Uh, the first, uh, two weeks or ten days of working days, they would have to go out. But if they continue to show the illness in, then that other part of that would come in, so. Uh, cause the big question was, are we gonna have to use our vacation days if you're twelve month employees? Or are we gonna have to use our sick days if we're ten month employees? You, you don't have to do that, you're covered under this CARES Act. There's other funding that's being given also that covered this as far as that. Uh, so that we have the proper materials that we need for safety. Some of that comes out of that. So we're being budgeted money to put things together to prevent things happening on our campuses with this. So it's not having to come out of the general fund.
Gotcha, okay, that's good news.
I, I will say something on our reserve.
Well, it's good news, bad news, it's still our borrowed money from other places at the federal.
On our reserve, we have a reserve, we really don't have a catastrophe reserve, we have a reserve. And for that reserve is where we gave bonuses this year to the employees. So it went from a four point, four point percent down to about a three point two five percent. And so that's what we're trying to build back up. We wanna maintain a four percent. If we go below three percent, Tallahassee comes in and says, what's your plan of action to get you back up?
Okay.
Oh, I was, you go ahead, Marie.
My question is, as a school board member, what can you do to ensure that programs such as the sixteen nineteen project do not get into Lake County schools?
You as a parent, if somebody told me, tell Marie Dubois, she needs to be on that committee, whether she's got kids in school or not.
What is the committee?
It's the curriculum committee that goes around as far as, and it decides what we allow into our schools, the books that we allow and everything. We have parents involved, in some cases grandparents, uh, and we have staff involved and they go through and they look at the curriculum. And all this also comes to the school board and it's all advertised as what we're doing before we approve it. So people have a right to come and look and view it. It's put out there to be able to be read or whatever and see that we're doing.
How well is it advertised to the general public because most people?
I would tell you it's done by law, but it's also done on our website.
Yeah, that's fair.
Okay, but you have to go to the website to see it, I mean, it's not like in the daily commercial.
No, no.
This isn't new for Marie. She has been doing this for years to try to get good curriculum and things in our schools. And we had to go and buy the books for our heritage of the United States and buy them and put them in schools because we couldn't get past the school board. Well, the school board did let us, put us in there, but they don't, you can't get back to the books and get back to the real America.
But as far as keeping that out as a board member, if it's not, but that's why I say as individuals that are on this committee, they bring that to us. And then other people, as they see that, like, especially like Vance, will bring it to our attention. And, you know, some people say, well, he's always this, but I tell you, he has a lot of good ideas, a lot of good points that he brings. I'm not saying that because of Vance.
Say that again.
I know that.
But, but the thing is, you bring that to the attention of the board and then the, I, I do my homework. I just don't take and see something and, and sometimes they get upset with me when we have meetings that is just individual board members with the superintendent and, you know, to talk about the agenda. And they're like, oh, here he goes again. But, you know, I, I, I'm asking, where does this money coming from? How's it being used and all, why are we doing this? Why are we using this curriculum? I was told by this parent that this curriculum don't work.
Right.
And one of it was that, uh, you know, I can't think of it, they're offspring of edgenuity. But it was for our younger age group kids, elementary kids, they were using that. And it was something that Edgenuity put together on the streamlining online. And there were some problems with it. And I asked, I asked Emily, I said, what's up with this? And she said, believe me, every time we have a problem with it, we send it right to them because they're trying to take the kinks out of it. I said, well, I've got relatives that have called me, text me, emailed me and said, we do not understand this second grade English. And they're college educated, smart kids.
I don't, I don't know about edgenuity, I do know that like Scholastic, those newsletters and stuff that go out, they are so biased against the United States and.
So I'm, I'm also in this position where I feel that we have a good curriculum set up currently right now. Everything can be improved and we can't. I don't like to reinvent the wheel. I like, I like to take what we have currently and massage it and make it a little bit better. Um, I don't feel like this sixteen nineteen book that we're coming in should be part of our curriculum. It could be a curricular. I, I don't have that problem in our libraries. I think that constitutionally, we should be eligible to read, um, information on all sorts of levels. And I, I think that's something the kids could do on their own, parents can take it in, um, bring it to their attention if they want to and use it, but.
You're talking about in the school library?
Yeah, I, I, and again, it has to be on approval list. Um, and that's something we would approve, but, but not part of a curriculum.
That's a different story there.
But it's, it's, it's propaganda, it's twisted.
Right, it shouldn't be.
That's right, it's a twisted, uh.
Well, and there are statutes that talk about literature in the schools as far as obscenity and.
Inappropriate, age level inappropriate.
And we have found books that are in Lake County schools that are on a list of inappropriate, um, with sexual inappropriate.
I just wanna share an experience with you, Sandor, go ahead, Marty.
I just wanna, um, it's been brought to my attention with, um, with kids not being in school, the psychological, negative psychological impact on them. What can we do as a community to help with that, especially when they go back to school? Cause I know some of the kids in my complex have told me their parents and their grandparents are driving them crazy. There's been a negative.
Send the parents to school.
From the child psychologist.
I think number one is this, that especially in the elementary is where they're, okay, it's too loud in here, these kids are gonna be so overwhelmed by seeing their friends that there's gonna have to be some leniency as far as them coming back and recognizing each other and things of that nature there and catching up on lost time. Now granted, now granted, a lot of these kids have been on Twitter or Facebook or whatever. And so they've been keeping up, but I, I, I think there's gonna have to be some leniency given on that part to make sure that they're allowed to, to come back together because that's what they're missing.
They're missing that, they're missing horsing around, recess, playing with each other and it's good for them emotionally.
Go ahead.
Yeah, and I know a lot of, a lot of teachers in our district here, District Four, are ready for that. And they have been preparing for that. And, um, even, even some of the administrators are making sure that their, their staff knows, hey, when you come back in, be a little bit more lenient on staff as far as they're in the classroom, in the cafeteria. Even with their school and classwork, they're gonna be a little bit more lenient to get them just started. You know, it's just like any kind of engine we have, right? You can't start that engine and run it right away, we gotta warm it up a little bit. And the older we get, we need to warm up a little bit more, right? But that's one of the things that, like you were saying, they are gonna have to get used to and give them a little bit more leniency. And our kids have been keeping up with each other. Um, we have a totally different type of networking in our schools now. Um, Snapchat and, 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 uh, is probably one of the biggest ones they have out there. They are on that twenty-four seven, they know everything that's happening. They have everything from TikTok, uh, competitions, right?
Yeah, TikTok is Chinese.
But I'm talking about those younger ones, like the, like the physical being outside.
Well, I tell you, a lot of that has to do with the teachers and the administration. I, I know the, uh, a lot of the elementary administrators, they think outside the box.
I teach, I teach elementary kids, age Sunday school, so.
Well, they, they think outside the box at their local school. So they do different things that gets them more involved and oriented back into the school system to make them wanna stay there and, and come back. Uh, there's a lot of, uh, teachers that think outside the box and, and the problem is with the, the distancing that we met, they may not be able to do as much as they used to do to make their classroom or, uh, want to be there versus that this is what we gotta do because of distancing, so. But yeah, it, it has to do with staff all throughout. And we also have psychologists at every school.
That's too bad.
Well, um, actually, that's a good thing. Um, in, in the past, we've not had enough, I know you're joking, but in the past, we've not had enough.
Not, not a hundred percent.
And we've, and we've also had a problem where our guidance counselors end up doing the counseling. And then we have, um, our, our administrative staff starts helping in the counseling section. Let me tell you right now, your school resource officers, we're counselors, we're all crisis trained. And so we go in and that's one of the things that we also do is to help. And we're gonna have a lot of those kids come back with issues. There, that's why I said school needs to start right away. I'm gonna be honest, as a parent, I want school to start, but as in, a school resource officer out there and administrator in the schools, I can tell you right now, there are students that are being abused at home right now. And they need to come back, this is a safety net for them, this is a place where they can come and not, um, feel unsafe. And our schools need to be open.
I know, I have some children that come to my Sunday school, well, we're, we're gonna reopen again, but there's a couple of them that, they come to church and they tell me they feel safe, they're away from the bad environment at home. But now will the schools, will they be allowing volunteers to come and volunteer like they used to or would they?
It's gonna be on a local basis, I think. They're gonna still have, they'll still have some, some parent volunteers, but you'll have to go through your local school to see if you can get on that list.
We've been advised against it, uh, because of what they can bring to the campus. So try to limit it to, to staff, uh, as, as far as that because you don't want to, someone come in as a volunteer and not be aware of what they have, so, uh, but we, we've been advised against it, so.
Seems like you need volunteers more than ever.
Marie and I have participated in some of the curriculum instructional material, both challenges and reviews. And the system is rigged in favor of the district, in favor of the state, and in favor of the teachers. Now, these guys will, will formally sit down with you and spend time with you and it, and listen to your.
Are they salesmen or the?
Uh, if you challenge.
No, the district staff, like in the house, the office.
Or, or at a school, we've challenged at East Ridge.
The book depository staff.
And, I mean, they'll listen to your comments, spend as much time with you as you, as you want, but you're outvoted and the system is rigged against you because the, the room is stacked with either teachers or department heads or district reps. And, and they all have their justifications for why, why this defective product exists. And to, for one or two people, citizens to overturn that generally does not happen. Even the principals will not.
Yep, when we went in and challenged this one, it, this is one of the places I find the most egregious is the supplemental material that the teachers get online. You know, they're supposed to teach standard five, six and seven, so they go to the computer and they Google Florida standard five, six and seven and it pops up this, um, sheet for the kids and they hand it out and the kids look at it, read it and answer questions from it. And, um.
It's non-profit propaganda, it's a, it's a non-profit left communist, I'm gonna say communist socialist agenda. And it's right there on the bottom, it's right there written, this is the author of this. And, and that information is presented digitally, I think, little controls. I mean, that, when you have digitally, digital articles that are presented on a daily basis and manipulated on a daily basis for teachers to access.
Entire websites.
Entire websites. I mean, the opportunity for mischief there and how anyone can control that, put standards in place that need, are clearly defined statutes. It was an eight seventy, whatever it is that outlines what history is and what outlines what literature is. And then you get into the sciences, which are inundated with this same propaganda in their, in their materials.
They embed the, the liberal viewpoint and that, and it's documented from many different places. And I guess the big issue that I brought up in public input periodically is that the, the, I keep asking for the superintendent and the board to come up with a mission statement that says, we are going to have a values oriented, um, and you know, I'm just in general terms right now, but there's a, there's a whole body of knowledge out there about the, uh, indoctrination that's included in the textbooks. I tracked it through for the sections on Islam.
Right.
Where they're actually telling them how to do the prayer. And then they're having them do it in class in some places now. Haven't found a lot of evidence that it's probably here.
The Lake County is better than most in all the areas.
We're grateful for. When I first came in, you had your roadmap for the classes for, I think it was sixth grade and eleventh grade for history. And both of them, they said they're gonna allocate three weeks to the Islam chapter. And chapter, and Islam had an entire chapter magically in both books. And they were gonna allocate three solid weeks to that stuff. And then there was nothing on Judaism and there was hardly anything on Christianity. Now the staff is talking about, the last time I went in there, they spent a lot of time and said, oh, we got this. And they had a sheet and here's a quote here and here's a paragraph here. And they really worked the system and I'm telling you that the, there's several independent groups, like one out of Texas that's now come and reviewed the textbooks here in Florida. And others, and they find all this garbage in it. And it, and you keep, and all, we'll say like it's Common Core. And the teachers and the staff will say, oh, it's only, uh, Common Core is only reading and, uh, what English, what's English? ESL and math. And so, but the thing is, they embed it in the textbooks because both of the major textbook companies you use are partially owned by Arabic interests. Okay, and I researched it all the way back to how, uh, the one, um, uh, Muslim country took over. Okay? And I researched it all the way back to how the one Muslim country took over. Did a behind-the-scenes takeover of the publisher. Uh, and, cause it was a publisher that was actually famous, but headquartered in like Belgium or somewhere. And they took them over. And my, the question is, I've never seen the board take a statement on values to, which might call Christian values or just American values.
Right.
And to, and to start excluding, telling teachers to exclude that because they're stuck with these textbooks because there's only three, maybe for history and so forth, on the state-approved, well, state-approved list, and that's what they have to choose from. And so they'll, you'll sit there and they'll say, well, we just, we picked the, the least worst one, you know? And, but you need to have some values, I think, to coincide with, uh, the county and, and, you know, what I call American values.
Here's, here's one of the questions that didn't make it last night, number three, right?
Yep.
Which is a solution to that and would be a good question for you guys. We, I know we're getting close to the end.
Yeah.
I'll go with the question.
Here, Andy, you read it.
Okay, here, here, here's one.
This is important.
It, it's one that we didn't make, that we didn't get to.
Well, you see us challenges?
No.
Or is that one that's different from what y'all sent out in the questionnaire?
Oh, yeah, 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 it's different. It's different. Marie came up with it. Well, we've used it in other candidate forums and other cycles. There is a, there are currently Florida statutes requiring historic accuracy and preventing inappropriate literature in schools. However, books and supplemental materials are currently used in our district that are historically biased, that don't comply to the statute, or incomplete, or literature that is offensive, doesn't comply to the statute, especially sexual content that is not age-appropriate. Would you, candidates, be in favor of a compliance audit and citizen review, if deemed appropriate, of these instructional materials? Just to see that these instructional materials comply to statute. It's eight seventy-something.
And there's one thousand three is another one.
One thousand three. It's just, so these are statutes that everything downstream through the Board of Education and it's the district meets these.
See, my thought is like you guys look at Neola, is it to make sure that you're in compliance with all the new laws and stuff? And perhaps we should do something like that with, you know, the history and the litera-, yes. And make sure that you're in compliance.
I would volunteer to be one of those citizens on that audit.
As long as you're not outnumbered by staff.
Yeah. Well, AP program is another one. That's just riddled because the guy running it is the guy who founded Common Core. And he moved over there, and so he's directed all their tests to be in alignment with the Common Core and all the things that, that we consider to be indoctrination. And I'm just a values guy. I mean, or, I mean, forget the religious issues. It's just, it's anti-history and other things that they do.
Anti-Americanism.
Yeah. And that's the question is, uh, and so maybe we could have the police experience to share his thought because he's now been ambushed with his question.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, I was gonna say, come on. So, on one of the things that we need to look at is, I, I kinda agree with you, having a little citizen's review just to give us more information and more insight, sitting as a board member would help. And I agree with you saying that maybe you guys won't be outnumbered. And we could get some real facts from you guys and be able to present a really good argument when it comes to some of this. And I talked to you this before, right, about the religion. I sat in the civics class and they did talk about religion. I didn't see the teacher concentrate three weeks on Islam. There was a question proposed to me before about Muslims in the schools. And I said, no, 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 it's Islam. It's what they're teaching, just like they're teaching Judaism and Christianity in the schools. They're using that as a religion. They're using that religions of the world. That's all they're talking about. They're not teaching about the subject. They're just telling you and informing the students that there's religions in the world. And that was in a civics class I sat in. I thought that was a good idea because as Americans, sometimes we become a little focused on ourselves and we forget that the world exists and there's different areas and different religions out in the world that we need in customs. And I've traveled around the world. I've been to Morocco and walked the deserts with some Barim people. And I've been to, you know, Israel and been in, in different parts of our countries, uh, different parts of the world, and seen religions from those and respected them. Because as Americans, that's what we need to do, is Americans respect those people in those areas.
See, I would argue that we have gone overboard respecting other religions and other countries, other cultures.
Well, when we go into their country.
As opposed to Americans.
When we go to their country, we need to learn.
Well, that's fine, but we're talking about in this country.
We're talking about flat-out indoctrination in the history books. I've documented it. I've got a hundred and forty snapshots of those sections in the books.
Yeah, and that's something I would love to see also.
And that, it's up on there.
So you're on our committee too, Vance?
There you go.
Sure, welcome in. I think you need to develop some standard values though, as to what's acceptable and what isn't.
Exactly, I agree.
Just an audit, just an audit. Say, see, this is the as-is. That's all.
And I don't have a problem with that because, number one, with my position I have, not as a board member, as a pastor, I'm very much about values. And the thing is, what you brought up, we have gave too much to where we have put, where we can't, our kids can't say a prayer here, but yet they can.
Yeah, I don't understand that.
And so how is it right for them but wrong for us?
Well, the culture is way ahead of us on this. It's constantly, constantly bombarded.
You have a moment of silence at a school board meeting and yet the, it's not allowed in the classroom.
And, and see, when I took over the planning and zoning as chair, uh, right now we have continued because before I make a change, I wanna make sure the rest of my committee is on. But the previous, before me, uh, took away the prayer, even a moment of silence.
Yeah, I remember that.
Away. And some of our panelists or board up there on the planning and zoning says, what happened to our prayer? So since I've been back on, I have initiated a moment of silence.
Good man.
You know, but I, I don't have a problem with saying a, an oral prayer, you know?
Right.
Because to me, it acknowledges what I stand for, and I stand for Christianity. So, uh, and if I offend someone, you, you have the right, you can go outside while we do this and you can come back in after we get through. Uh, but this is how we, this is our country. This is how we're done.
But if you do it now, there will be somebody come up and they will.
Offer a lawsuit.
Yeah, a lawsuit or something, just to keep.
Because I've even made the comment about why can we not actually say a prayer at our school board member meetings? And they said, well, because you will be sued like crazy.
Yes.
But, okay, well, come on.
So then you get Anthony Sabatini to represent you.
Pro bono.
I don't know why.
He'd love to.
It's, but you would.
I don't wanna speak for him, but I'll bet you he would love to.
You'd have to allow people from different religions to do that. That's what they do in the cities in the county, yeah.
The county has done. Also, the city of Taveries. When I was on council at Taveries, there would be times that a minister was not available and Nancy Barnett would say, hey, or the mayor at that time, who it might be, or even if I was mayor, if there was no one there, I would say the prayer and we would do it verbally. And then we move on to the Pledge of Allegiance. And the county, they initiated that. But one thing that the county did, and really it's kinda in the city as well, you're not supposed to say the word Jesus.
Yeah, I don't understand that.
You know, and I'm sorry, uh, I don't take no thought about what I'm going to say. I say it.
Right, right.
It's automatic. I acknowledge Jesus.
But as long as, as long as you allow like a Jewish person to say a prayer, that's.
They do. They're very different.
But then you gotta allow the Emaun too, but.
And our chaplains are all the same way. We have chaplains that are, are actually rabbis. And we actually have chaplains that are from the Baptist church and from other different, uh, the Catholic church. And that's what they do. They're, they're, I wouldn't say when they do a prayer, it's a generalized prayer because we all believe in God and what God, right? So, and that's, that's how I feel that our students should be allowed to do the same thing. I'm never gonna stop a kid from sitting down and praying before they eat lunch.
Right.
That's, that's not.
A staff member cannot interact with, suit a body and lead them in prayer.
So, so students are.
But you don't stop them either, do you?
So students are allowed to give, to say a prayer and give thanks for their food at lunchtime?
Not always. And, and like Kellin has it, but you just turn to, uh.
I know in California, the students can get suspended for saying a prayer in school.
Okay, exactly. Are we doing a Pledge of Allegiance in classrooms, in every classroom?
We have one everywhere.
And in most cases, it's a telecast broadcast.
Right, okay. I know the elementary.
There, and there's someone that's doing the announcements and they lead, they have a moment of silence and then they lead in a prayer.
Oh, they do have a moment of silence? Okay.
And they lead in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let's give you guys a couple minutes just to talk about yourselves and, you know, again, what you see the school board going forward if you're re-elected or elected. And maybe some of your most important issues that are the most important to you. Who wants to start?
Good to meet you.
Well, as being re-elected, I wanna continue what we've been doing as far as going forward with our graduation rates and our dropout reductions going down. And continue moving forward in that, in the superintendent presenting a program in two thousand eighteen that goes through two thousand twenty-two to try to keep our curriculum going the right way, to keep our grads going the right way, and, and all these other things that's been added. Since that time when that was done, the point seven-five mileage came out, which allowed us to be able to hire guardians for the schools, the sheriff's department or the police department, to pay for their officers to be at schools. Uh, we don't have a guardian, I was told, at every school, but we have a, a resource officer or a deputy at every school in Lake County. And in some cases, we do have a guardian plus there. Uh, we're trying to do that all throughout the county. Uh, I think I was told that we have over fifty guardians in Lake County. And we have others that are going through the courses. And as I said before, we allow administrators to go through the course to become certified as well. One of the biggest things we're facing this, next year is the, is this pandemic, how we're gonna get started with it. What has been issued to us is, is only good for the fall. Once the fall is over, they'll re, in between, they will reevaluate and tell us what we can do for the winter months. But we're looking to go forward with that. Uh, and as far as our finances, uh, we will be having workshops here in the next weeks to discuss what our finances are. Scott has already been putting things together to try to get it going but to let us know what we will have to work with and what we won't have to work with. Uh, and we haven't heard specifically back from all teachers, how many are going to retire or how many, what. But there's only so much room in the virtual, and we're looking at adding one allocation only right now to the virtual because of the amount that is said to be slated to go there. So we're not looking at a lot of swing on that. So we're looking at a lot of breaking more teachers still being there, those that want to be there. Uh, there's not, the thing is, if they choose not to be there because of health reasons, then they, you know, they choose not to do that. But, uh, we are moving forward. As I said, I, twenty-two years I've worked for the system behind the scenes and support staff. As I, I made a comment last night, when you build a building, you gotta start with a footer and a foundation. I'm the footer and foundation part of the board. Our board has different representatives there. I only make up twenty percent of it. But I'm, some people say, you're the weekly because you have no college degree. Well, I actually have nine semester hours. Okay?
Neither does Bill Gates.
And, and that nine semester hours is because I, I coached high school sports. And they would only give you a two-year certification and then you had to go and get this nine semester hours if you wanted to continue coaching in high school, and I do. Uh, I coach with my daughter right now at U-Montreal High School softball. I don't get paid because I can't get paid to do it, but I volunteer. I do a lot of groundwork up there on that softball field and getting prepared. Luckily, there's a guy volunteered now, so that's taking some of that pressure off of me. But, uh, there's a lot that I do. I, I, I don't just show up for meetings. I, I sit on four different boards plus an allocation board for Lake County school system within itself. And I'm very proactive on that. Uh, this year, we did not have a meeting because I had some things I wanted to bring up in it. And, you know, we didn't have a meeting because of this. So they said, we're just gonna go with what we did last year except we're gonna make cuts in teachers because we are consolidating classes to make the percentage rather than like it is right now. So they cut sixty positions in teachers. Uh, but the thing is, in all of this, what makes me eligible to be a board member? I have a heart and soul for Lake County schools. I have three great kids that are still in the system. One, he'll be a sophomore this year. One will be in seventh grade, and one, she's going in third grade. I have an investment in that. And somebody said, well, you're not in for raises. You're not one to give us raises. I have a, a wife and a daughter, both work for the Lake County school systems. And believe me, if there's any way possible that we could come forth to give raises, I would give raises. But there's no way we can guarantee it, as, as Vance pointed out about the, the finances going into this next year. That's why we could not give raises last year because we're not sure how much money we're gonna have to start with.
Yeah.
And with the tax revenue not being like it, sales tax not being like it would be, we're gonna lose revenue there. So, and so where do we get those finances from? Well, the government is, is chipping in some, but as always, the government doesn't always chip in. Something I'd like for you also to consider is, and this is something that we have brought up at the school board workshops, not so much in a meeting, but in a workshop, and that is, it's called a compression adjustment. Two years, a year ago, we got two point eight million dollars. This past year, we got two point six million dollars. The average that we should get annually is twenty million.
For what?
To help break the difference up of what the government gives, the state gives us and what our local effort gives us to help bring what we should get per student. The compression adjustment and the compression adjustment.
I thought you were talking about teacher salaries.
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's.
But, but this, but this also.
Maybe you ought to explain then what you mean by.
The compression adjustment, if you go to ten point, or ten eleven point six two, it details compression adjustment. But what it really is and can tell with is we don't have enough industry or commercial revenue coming in in taxes that we would give what other districts. We're like six, fifty-nine or sixty, I forget, out of sixty-seven counties on per student that we get on that. There are counties that are smaller than us, but because of what they have in their county, they get more per student.
Where are we on number of students? Where do we rank on number of students?
We're the nineteenth largest district in the state of Florida out of sixty-seven.
And we get paid?
Yeah.
You're talking about the big spreadsheet that Bill LeFaius made.
Yes, the compression adjustment that he showed. In all the years, if you go across, now, if you take that twenty million dollars a year, and it started out less earlier, but as it progressed and it should have been in the last three years, twenty million dollars a year, that's sixty million dollars, and we've only got five point four. That's a lot of money that could have been in us, into our revenue. Also, our reserve would have been where we needed to be at four percent.
That's money you never got.
That's money we never received. And see, the thing is, we can't get hit by unions about, we are getting this, you're getting that. You're getting a cost of living for all the teachers when it all come down. Okay, where?
Let, let me clarify just what he's talking about is that all the counties, you know, there's a pot of money and they allocate it with this big, huge absurd formula. And our county gets less than what our taxpayers put into the entire pot.
It's a one million. It's a one mil.
And so it's not returning all the money that our people put into it because a lot of it is going to the urban cities and they've had fights constantly trying to get them to relinquish that, basically an overpayment to them.
Well, they have more reps and senators in the legislature.
And so that's the issue is.
The reason we have school choice is because someone's student or their child, I should say, did not get to go to the school they wanted to for athletics. Next thing you know, we have school choice.
That's unfortunate.
I mean, but it's fortunate that we have schools.
Fortunately, we got it, but how we got it is.
It's working really bad too.
Yeah, so, um, for me, it's gonna be basic, what I'm standing for, the ACT program. I wanna go back and try to get students, especially kids right from elementary school into the right reading programs, into the right areas so that their academics will grow and they will see better student-taking test, better examples of our students graduating and going to our different levels of colleges and vocational schools. To me, that's something that we possibly can do here. I know there's a lot of students graduating today that don't wanna go to college. They wanna stay in the vacation area. I mean, I know we have ourselves here, we have many businesses that wanna do that. I, like my, like the incumbent here is Andy. Me and him both didn't finish college. Both of us have been educated in a school of hot narcs, okay? Um, and we've hit the grindstone and we've made ourselves to where we're at right now. And that was because we didn't have good, basic academics in our, in our life. The other thing is, I'm gonna be committed to doing that, to making sure that we look at things that way. And I'm also looking for teamwork. I'm one of those people that believe that when we have a bunch of people on our team and people that challenge us, sometimes Vance and I, um, and, and people that come out and help us as much as we can, Barb, right? To, to make us a better team. That's where I'm looking at. Safety's gonna be a big deal for me, and I agree with Sandy. Look, um, one of the things that I saw in the schools with our guardian program, and yesterday the question that came up, we have a computer system that watches what our students are on constantly. So if they hit the internet and they put how to build a bomb, there's a flag that goes up and it's a whole guardian system and it goes into it. So I was confused when the question came up. And so, that's. came up. And so that's why I leaned over to Sandy and said, man, I really messed up that question, didn't I? But the problem with that is, I believe in the guardian system. I like it. I had an early question when I was starting, I was one of the supervisors at the school, and they said, hey, what about arming just the teachers? And I said, let's put a break on that. I want to make sure that the people who we are putting in charge of holding a gun on our campuses, okay, is somebody that the SRO can work with. And I talked to a lot of SROs, and we want to work with the guardian program. Okay, I'm having an extra pair of hands on campus, having an extra weapon on campus.